This conference will now be recorded.
Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Beeson?
President.
Commissioner Stoman?
Here.
Mr. Stover?
Here.
Mr. Tweedy?
President.
Mayor Warren?
Here. If you want to participate in the opening prayer and predilections, please stand. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, before we go into this meeting, we place ourselves before you, for you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about us. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to respect and understand the views of others. Help us to value, appreciate those around us. May your light enfold us. May your spirit guide us, and may your grace abound in us. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any additions, relations?
Yes, so item number one under the city manager department, we want to change that to receive an update from Alfredo Sempel on the sleep edition residential housing development.
Okay. Do you hear a motion?
Give a motion to to add or to delete and replace new business city manager department. Item number one was to receive an update from Alfredo Sempel on the sleep edition residential housing development.
Second.
Even second. Any discussion? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Proclamation awards. We have Optimus Club come up here at this podium, please.
Whereas volunteers working with young people who are our joy of today and our hope of tomorrow, are given representatives of potential to be reached and to be reached and dreams to come true. They're also unbound in their enthusiasm, their own talent, skills, hard work to make difference in our other lives. Whereas members of Optimus International will celebrate Optimus Day throughout the world the first Thursday of every February to promote their efforts in helping and recognizing the young people that makes a difference in our communities and who will engage in a greater exchange of ideas between young people and adults. And whereas there are 2,400 Optimus Clubs with more than 70,000 members in Optimus International and Optimus throughout the world that will carry out more than 6,500 service projects and serve 6 million youth or young people, excuse me, serve 6 million young people a year. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I J. Warren, Mayor of Arkans City, Kansas, issue the proclamation declaring the first Thursday of every February as Optimus Day in the city of Arkans City. And may this day instill pride in our Optimus for all of our constituents and for the impact they have truly made a difference in other lives.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Garrett Heilig. I'm the president of the Ark City Optimus Club. I would like to say thank you Mayor Warren and city council members. Optimus Day is celebrated throughout the world annually on the first Thursday of February. This is a day for the world can be an optimist themselves in action, plus join us in honoring Optimus Clubs and Optimus members and their communities for all they do and year round. The Optimus Club of Arkans City was founded in 1981. They are a group of hardworking individuals who want to give back to their communities. Our mission is to provide hope and positive vision. Optimists bring out the best in the youth, our communities, and ourselves. Our purpose is to develop optimism in a, as a philosophy of life, utilizing the tenets of the Optimus Creed, to promote the active interest in good government and civic affairs, to inspire and respect of the law, to promote patriotism, and for international accord and friendship among all people to aid and encourage the development of youth and the belief that giving of oneself and the service to others will advance the well-being of humankind and communities, life, and the world. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We get the picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Recognition of visitor staff, TIF.
Presentation or presentation of the VFW post officer of the year award to Officer Dillon Hattenbach. I believe no one's here.
My name is Charlie Cravens. I'm the VFW post commander out here, also the junior vice of the state of the VFW. It was a hard fought battle to what else wanted the job, so I took it. Thank you for having us here. It's not the first time I've been here. I hope it's not the last. The goal of the law officer enforcement officer of the year program is to recognize those deserving individuals whose performance and their duties distinguishes them from all others. The honor is intended to be awarded to an individual who serves in a municipal, county, state, or federal unit task with enforcement of the laws pertaining to their area or responsibility. Every community has at least one outstanding law enforcement officer who should be recognized. After the post receives the nomination for officer of the year, it is submitted to the district committee. The district then submits one winner to the state chairman for final selection. Got a little bit late this year, so it's understandable that happens. So we weren't, we didn't win state. This is his nomination. I would like to officially nominate Patrol Officer Dillon Hattenbach the 2023 VFW and Arkans City Police Officer of the Year. Officer Hattenbach was hired by the Arkans City Police Department on December 2nd, 2021. Officer Hattenbach, while only being here a short time, has risen to the top of his rank as one of the top performers in his field. Since Officer Hattenbach was released from his field training program, this, his work ethic has proven why he should win this award. During the calendar year, Officer Hattenbach has been recognized almost every month for his productivity. Officer Hattenbach has excelled in proactive and self-initiated activity over the course of the year and is the leading officers in arrests for the 2023 year. Officer Hattenbach has a busy year in 2023. Had a busy year. Hattenbach was recognized 25 different times for his reliability, whether it was to cover shift, coming early or stay late. Officer Hattenbach has shown that he is a team player and is willing to do whatever it takes to make sure the public is taken care of. One of Officer Hattenbach's strongest qualities is his attitude. It's very rare that Officer Hattenbach is in a bad mood. His positive outlook always makes people around him work harder and enjoy coming to work. He is someone that officers go to advise and to learn from. On August the 13th, 2023, Officer Hattenbach was recognized for solving a car burglary, burglary, an attempted commercial burglary. Officer Hattenbach was able to locate the suspect and was able to gain full confession of the individual. As a new officer, this, this can be a difficult task, but Officer Hattenbach did not look back down and did an amazing job. Officer Hattenbach has shown maturity in his short career here. Officer Hattenbach was accepted in the Southern, Southern Kansas SWAT team just after one year of being on the police department. His ability to learn and grow at such a young career will only take him further. Officer Hattenbach never backed down from a challenge tasked in the issues. Obviously, you have distinguished yourself from your peers. We'd like to present this certificate of appreciation and a $20 gift certificate to the VFW restaurant, Best Steaks in town. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Appreciate you, Mayor. Sorry for your loss.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Can send agenda? Do you have a motion for that?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion approved, consent is second, I mean, been second. Any other discussion on it? Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alfredo's not here, is he yet?
Yeah, we're not quite there. You have a good old business first.
Okay, all right. Old biz, I'm sorry.
Item number one is approve amendments to previously approved independent contractor service agreement addendum two, N. M. Iverson, Jr., for municipal court judge services. Thank you.
So the, on the two, on the two judges, on the, on the contract we looked at or agreement we looked at last meeting, I used the wrong starting base. It was, they had a $20 increase prior to the number I used, so we need to adjust that. And they wanted some clarification on the travel and the training stuff too, so that's the changes in those two. Stuff they're not good, more accurate.
Mayor, I move we approve the amendments previously approved for independent contractor service agreement addendum number two with N. M. Iverson, Jr.
Second. Hey, it's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? Not, it's a voice vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
O's, motion carries. Number two.
Approve amendments to previously approved independent contractor service agreement addendum number two with E. Rodney Iverson for municipal judge, municipal court judge services.
Same thing.
Same thing.
I move that we approve amendments to previously approved independent contract service agreement and addendum for number two with E. Rodney Iverson, municipal court judge services.
Second. Hey, it's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? Not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approve amendments to previously approved professional service agreement addendum number one with H. Kristen Munson for prosecutor services in municipal court.
In her previous contract, she had a 90-day provision if she decided to leave the position. And so she asked that.
How will that affect us in recruiting prosecutor?
Well, it'll give us 60 less days to find somebody.
She doesn't have to give any notice really. It's just courtesy.
That's kind of standard, isn't it? I mean.
Yeah, I think 90s will look extreme to expect out of somebody, but I suppose our city attorney could fill in for her.
Been there, done that. Make her happy.
Make her happy.
That's right.
I move to approve the amendments to previously approved professional service agreement addendum number one with H. Kristen Munson for city prosecutor services municipal court.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and second. Any discussion on it? If not, it's a voice vote. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. New business.
Okay, item number one in your city manager department is.
Scene, oh, there he is. Yeah, he just walked in.
This was our amendment to the agenda, so we're going to receive an update from Alfredo Sempel on the sleep edition residential housing development project.
Hey, just come up this podium, Alfredo.
Okay, so we just finished with the survey and then we should have the survey done, completed by the end of this week. And also, I think Randy talked to Gordon and then they're working on the, in pretty much the project agreement. There's been like a little miscommunication there between the project agreement and the letter of intent initially, but anyway, all that stuff's been, kind of pretty much cleared, cleared out. And also, we've waited for the phase one environmental report, which that started about probably a month and a half, two months ago, right at the end of last year. And then we're, we're waiting that from the, from the state. And then we're still waiting on the response from our, you know, the tax investment credits. All that's been submitted last year, and then we're supposed to have a response by the mid-寅夜, but we're, we're still waiting on that. So everything else, I mean, we're very enthusiastic to, you know, move on. And then we're just now kind of pretty much working on those little details right now. But in terms of all the, you know, from the foundation app, we're like, have, everything is ready, plus our numbers. Everything's looking, is looking really good as you should.
So when do you think you'll hear from the tax credits?
You know, we were, the deadline, their deadline was寅夜 15, so it's already a little behind. But that's from the state.
Kind of normal or not?
You know, I don't, if it is anything like MIH is, you know, it's not normal. Typically, they have like it's definite, but then we did some more research and then on the incentive credits, it's like really they look at, since it's not a grant, they look at so many other pieces. And we submitted a lot of evidence, a lot of support from the city and from other institutions. So I think they have to see how they pretty much break that down. And I, and we're thinking that is kind of really what, what is happening. We talked to somebody from the state actually, and they say that typically it is, it is normal whenever they have what a few applicants and the all applicants are looking good because typically it's like, it's a good thing because you might not have the full tax credit, but you might have something that is still going to help you out. So at this point, we're just kind of still waiting. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Number two, some new business.
An ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41-19719C to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Wilson Park from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. during Tarkalala on a week, May 4th, 2024, I'm sorry. So that'll be on Saturday. So this is an annual request that Tarkalala puts in in order to serve alcohol. And they do, they are utilizing a caterer is roped off during the event. And I know we've had this in the past, so the only difference this year is they're asking to start at 11:00 versus when they start serving.
Do we have anybody from, from Tarkalala here?
I don't think anyone's.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, the same way except they want to start an hour early.
Right, correct.
Can't drink all day if you don't start early, right? All right, well, I move that for an ordinance exempting the application of KSA 41719C to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol liquor at a designated area of Wilson Park from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. during Tarkalala on May 4th, 2024.
Second. Okay, it's been moved second. Is there any discussion on it? If not, it's a roll call, Lou.
Commissioner Beeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stoman?
Yes.
Commissioner Stover?
Yes.
Commissioner Tweedy?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes. Motion carries. Number three.
Resolution authorizing the city of Arkans City to allocate funds for capital improvements to the Cali County Humane Society building for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Well, as you're aware, the city of Winfield and the city of Arkans City, we own the building that the humane society's in. There's been a number of years now where some of the maintenance has been deferred and not taken care of out there. They have new management and we're trying to get caught up on, on some of the issues with the building. And so there's three, three things that we're wanting to repair and we would, we would take half the cost and went to pay for half the cost. There's epoxy floors out in the kennel area. There, the epoxy's peeling away from the concrete. And some of those kennels have been taken offline by the state when they, during inspection because they can't be cleaned properly. So there's a $6,000 epoxy repair going on.
And on that epoxy repair, that's one, because, because I, when we first brought it to us, I said, why don't we just pull that off, pull that off, the concrete? But it actually has to go up the side of the wall. That's the problem, correct?
Yeah. It goes up the side and keeps the water from.
Or urine or whatever.
Yeah, that stuff can get into the cracks and things, so. The other, the other thing is there is an outdoor drainage trough where they wash out the kennels into. And then that, when it goes in the trough and it disperses across the ground and, and that trough is basically not draining anymore. It's getting out of level and just not draining properly. So we had a bid to replace, remove and replace the trough drainage system. That's 15,000. And then the final, the final piece is the indoor plumbing. There's quite a bit of copper plumbing that's been leaking. And so that there's a $6,000 estimate to repair the plumbing inside the building.
Said the drainage is 15,000. You mean 1,500?
15,000.
For the drainage?
Yeah. It's a, it's a concrete trough that goes around the back of the. So I would ask that, because when I get in there, there might be a little extra cost if we could, if we could get the ability to spend 15,000, up to 15,000 for our share of those repairs.
I assume they got started.
They actually have already started. So in Winfield, it's putting up, it's kind of fronting the cost on it.
Okay.
Get approval from you.
Well, I make a resolution to authorize the city of Arkans City to allocate, allocate funds for the capital improvements to the Cali County Humane Society building for an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved second. Any other discussion on it? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Environmental Service Department, number one.
It's a resolution authorizing the city of Arkans City to accept a bid submitted by Kansas Water Technologies of Valley Center to purchase reverse osmosis membranes and installation thereof for an amount not to exceed $319,200.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Minister of Commission. Oh, my name is Kyle Blueball. I'm the Assistant Environmental Services Lieutenant. To get some background to that, the membranes at the water plant, testing have degraded beyond repair and losing ability to maintain water quality. They've reached a lifespan and the differential pressures are getting out of that, they're recommended by the manufacturer. So we recommend purchasing from KWT, which is Kansas Water Technologies. The best option is the lowest bid at $319,200 and providing services to help maintain membranes life. Anybody has any questions?
Yeah, we're kind of, usually it's five years. I know it's in our budget, you know, but is it five years? And we went all six years now or seven?
We actually went a year over the lifespan.
Okay. And we, when we built that water plant, we, ahead of time, we, we budgeted for all this, you know, these water filters and all that stuff.
That's one of those, I guess you could call it, it's an item that you know every five years or so that's going to have to be replaced. So that's just part of what we, we budget to, for that, for that throughout the time period there. So we have it available when it's time to replace them.
How long does it take to put those in? Can, we do it or do you have to have people come in and do it?
So Kansas Water Technologies will come in and help as well. Our guys will do it. Find the water plant, it's our environmental services, and we have four trains of membranes and it'll take about a week each.
Go ahead.
And that's all included in that $319,000 with them coming in half of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any services they provide will be included in that for us.
And I know it's, it says filter, so I'm just, for the community and people to know, what are you taking out of that water? What, what are these membranes removing?
Uh, all the minerals and deposits. It basically makes water as pure as it can be. We actually have to add minerals and stuff back into it because it makes it so pure. And one of the other things that it moves is like microbiology and stuff like that.
Is that the reason why we won the state water tasting contest two years back to back?
Yeah.
We actually, we only filtered about half the water through the membranes and then, and then we, the other half goes through the, the green filters and then we blend it back in.
Yeah, preliminary filter, because that water's so clean. Once you mix it with the water from the preliminary filter, it makes good drinking water at that point.
I move that we authorize the city of Arkans City to allocate funds for capital improvements to the Cali, oh, I'm sorry. I move we authorize city of Arkans City to accept a bid submitted by the Kansas Water Technologies of Valley Center, Kansas to purchase reverse osmosis membranes and to assist in installation thereof for the amount not to exceed $319,200.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. Is there any other discussion on it? Not, it's a voice vote. All favor, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, items on the, on the discussion from the city commissioners.
I had something on this, guys. There was, so last week in the paper, it said that we could pretty much expect not to get the $3.2 million to the hospital. And so since then, it's been in the paper, we had an editorial, and Facebook is blowing up. We weren't, you know, so I just wanted to, I wanted to, I'm also, when I got elected on, I'm also on the board of trustees for the hospital. And so I've been researching this pretty hard lately and I just wanted to, to kind of give what I've come up with. I've talked with the financial officer and the CEO. So they're, they're both aware of this. It's not going to be a surprise for them tomorrow or Thursday when it, when it shows up in the paper. So I just, and a lot of this has been said before, but I just think it's important that the city knows, that the citizens know that the only way we got this hospital was in 2009. We had to have, we had to get a loan from the Public Building Committee. And the only way they would get that is if the city backed it. So when we say that we, that we loaned them a million dollars, if the hospital goes under, we're still going to pay them $27 million. And it's going to come straight out of the hospital, out of the city. So it's not, it's not that we're, that we're giving this loan and they, they took the money and are running with it. We're doing this so that the city is at least getting something out of this. In 2019, we refinanced, saving the city $10 million. Did a point one, a 1% sales tax for healthcare, and then there's 1% for the general fund. Randy, if I screw any of this up, let me know. I did my homework, but that doesn't mean I took the test. And so when, when Arkans City took over the bonds or the loan, Randy and Jenny were smart enough to say, hey, we're going to do some, we're going to do some changes on this. And so what they've been doing is they've been taking that 1% sales tax and they've been sending it to the trustee every month, correct? We only have to pay it every six months.
There's two payments a year.
Okay, two payments a year. But once it goes to the trustee, that money can't be brought back out. So once we put it in there, somebody can't come in and say, hey, can we get some of that money back? Because we don't, you know, we need it. And so we're actually making more pay, double, or double up our payments. They have it lined up that there is enough money set aside that in 20, this year, September 2024?
Yep, September 2024.
They can, they've got money set aside and they can start calling off bonds and paying it from reverse. And so they will, this year in September, we'll be able to pay off 2020, 2035 through 2044. And I spoke with Jenny and she said we can get five of those years paid off. She's already got money passed out where it's going to pay off five of those years. And then in 2029, we can go from 34 to on up. And again, And again, so it looks like that it comes due in twenty forty four.
That would be the due date if.
The due date if we didn't pay anything extra. And so we are, are on schedule to pay this thing off. The goal was twenty twenty nine. She says that's probably a lofty goal. It's probably more around twenty thirty one. But, so it's getting paid off twelve, thirteen years early. One other thing I wanted to say is speaking with, you know, talking with the trustees and at the hospital and their plant, the CEOs plan, they are going to put on two new physicians, correct? That's what we're hunting for. And unfortunately with the physicians, it's, it's a, you got to spend money to make money. So the first two years of those physicians are there, the first year, we're going to kind of, it's, it's going to kind of break even. We may even lose a little money with them. On the second year, the physician should be bringing in people and so we should be making money then. And so they're, they're wanting the two years to kind of get themselves set, set up and, and profitable. Since that was, and that was, was spoken about, I spoke with, with the financial officer. And we found out that, that Arc City, the hospital, the previous administration had not been, there's, there's a, a thing called professional fee. And this professional fee is anytime a surgery is, is done at the hospital. If the surgeon signs off, this, the hospital gets fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars. We did five of those last week. So I'm going to do some, some scary math for you. Five of those last week that weren't, weren't signed off on is ten thousand dollars. So let's take ten thousand dollars times fifty two weeks. So we're missing, the last three years, we've missed five hundred and twenty thousand dollars each year. So that right there makes me feel very comfortable if, if they're, they're starting to get this fee now. And I, and I did talk to her and she said we cannot get twenty one back or twenty two back, but they think that she can still get twenty twenty three back. So there's an extra five hundred thousand. We have four hundred to five hundred thousand. I was a little, you know, I was going off this one week. The second thing is, we found two accounts that are going overseas to help with, with billing. And talking with Jay and them, Jay's on the trustees also, that is going to, we're going to, we're going to try to get that stopped next month. That is thirty two thousand dollars that we are spending each month. I don't know how this is going to prove, but we got thirty two thousand dollars and I'm sure it was something that, you know, previous administration was probably just able to sign off on. So there's thirty two thousand dollars. Take that times twelve and I had about three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars that, that we're, we're giving out. We're wanting to shut that down. See if that's a job that we can give somebody here in town instead of overseas or, or out of state. And so it looks like the total that the hospital, just these two changes that the hospital is, is getting ready to make is, it's a, it's a profit of seven hundred and eighty four thousand to eight hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. So I felt very confident that, that the hospital is not going in the wrong direction. I think it was just being mismanaged. So that's what I've got. And, and the million dollars, we did speak with them at the trustees. We, we brought up the idea and, and you know, I think they're supposed to, they had a profit of seven hundred and fifty thousand was what it was budgeted for.
Yeah.
I don't think that's really what they're going to get, but I did, at first they were, they were wanting to pay us off. They said that they would run on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. So Jay and I were kind of sitting there and we kind of whispered back and forth for a minute and then we said, hey, guys, why don't you just keep that million? Make your profit. And then at the end of the year, if you've got seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars extra, good faith would be to give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the city. So I think that's what we're going to, we're going to try to, to work in and, and see if we can get some kind of.
Well, they're going to budget.
Right.
The loss in the, in our budget. So we'll, you know, be sure that we can start paying this thing, you know, so that's what we're working on.
But anyways, it's, this is, you know, and, and I, I know that in the editorial said that Randy said this would be no problem. What Randy meant was Jennifer and him got together, they budgeted. And, and the city is going to have to tighten their belts a little bit, but for the citizens, it shouldn't be much of an issue. This is, this is not, it's not, it's not going to shut down stores or lights or anything for the city. And like I said, it really didn't matter because if they, if we didn't pay that, we were, the city was on the hook for it anyways. So I just wanted to, you know, wanted to get that out there. Hopefully the traveler will put a little bit of that in for us and help us out to, to educate and, and, and let people know what's going on. But we are, we are very intent on getting in there and, and going through the books, checking stuff and, and trying to get this, this turned around so that we're not sitting there cussing the hospital. I go out to it every week. I got to get blood, get blood every week. I go out there every week. So anyways, just, any, you know, and this is one, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them, Jay, or any of the commissioners.
Did, did they go into detail about these overseas accounts, what they were doing?
I've got them investigating that right now.
Okay.
Well, some of us is Medicare and Medicaid. That's the problem we have right now is our, is our, uh, what do we, our billings and stuff, we got three different billings and they're not cooperating each other and stuff. And that's, that's what we're going to try to change or what Leonard, Leonard, that's Leonard's expertise is billing. You know, because he's from a different hospital and stuff. And so that's what he's really worked on right now. And they're not talking to each other and some of them are not getting billed right and so forth. And that's what he's looking to, so.
Yeah, I even told him during the meeting, I said, hey, guys, I got a three hundred and forty eight dollar bill out there. I've tried to pay since October. And every time I call, it says I don't have one. So still trying to pay it.
Diane, do you have something to say?
Just completely off of that kind of a subject, okay? I, I, I asked the staff about the cement plant out there about the water. And y'all said that they weren't on our water. They are on our water. Matter of fact, they're a million, six hundred gallon a year user of our water. So, you know, I would just, they also come off of the same tower that what the packing plant out there comes off of. So we need to be sure, we're, we're going to lose two businesses if that, if water goes down. So we need to be.
You said it was one point six million?
Just wanted, want the commissioners to know they are a customer of ours and quite an, quite an impulsive customer too.
Yes, that, at their location. She had good report. That was good information to know.
Anything else from the commissioners?
I'm on a lighter note. I just want to say that this Saturday at eight o'clock in the parking lot, behind the auditorium gym, there's a Cars and Coffee. Starts at eight o'clock, lasts till about noon. And then that night they're going to meet in the country club parking lot for a seven o'clock Cars and Coffee. It's going to be a little chilly, but it's going to be fun.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have any comments from the audience that's not on the agenda?
So the first one listed is Brandon Jelling.
Sir, you want to get your aim on that or?
Yeah. Brandon Jelling, most of you know me. Just looking for maybe some clarification and maybe some answers to some of my questions regarding the hundred and one acres. Specifically the five acres that we, you guys assigned to an out of town developer. At the Friday work session, we said we're kind of going to feel our way through this. There's another development in town out here in Running Horse that was developed. And one of the stipulations was the road had to be put in, but they built the house out there. And now no more can be developed. There's lots of lots. I think there's seven or eight lots out there, but nothing can be developed because the roads aren't done. So my question is, Skyline, Eighth and Fifteenth, you know, pre-development of that hundred and one acres. Are we, are we planning on doing sidewalks and widening out those streets before any development is done?
Can I answer just one question?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to answer you, because being, working for the city before, I put a lot of rock on Running Horse. And I had a lot of people come out and ask questions and complaining. And my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, this may be something we need to look into, because this was just as we were cussing and putting crap down, was that the relator told everybody that bought a house that the city was going to do that and that was not what the city's intention was. And I wasn't even part of it. So I mean, I'm not trying to protect anybody here. I'm just letting you know what my information was. And I can look into it and find out if that's true or not.
I don't even care.
Okay, okay.
Focused on, because I would love to develop that out there.
Right. I just didn't want you thinking, hey, this almost here and then it ended.
I know all about that. So my question is that, that is right there is, I don't know how many of you have driven Skyline. Right? This, today, there's a big chunk of asphalt sitting in the middle of Skyline right now because a truck had a swerve, hit that pothole and busted and wore out.
Is that down on fif, between Fifteenth and Eighth?
It is. It is. So I guess that's my question. Is, is that going to be done before development is happening out there?
I don't know. Ready?
Well, you know, like we talked about the other day, we've, we were working with PEC to, to put together a developmental plan for that area out there. So and those are all types of things that we'll be looking at.
Right. So PEC won't write checks. PEC won't make you get those roads done. You know, they're only the firm that's going to design it for you. I'm talking where the rubber meets the road. Are we going to do that before it's developed out there?
I think we'll, we'll, we'll have to see what comes out of that study as to what, what needs to happen and, and we'll, I can't say and tell you, promise you one thing or anything, but.
And it gets a little more complicated. For the last five years, the city and the county have been fighting over that.
Well.
Is it not?
Not really, because I talked to the county.
Well, you talked to the county.
The first he'd heard it was in September. He actually get, we talked over all the emails and there's only one email and then one email going back. So they were supposed to have a meeting today, but that's first he's heard it from the city.
I've heard about it for six years. I was, when I was cleaning, when I was cleaning, I didn't care.
Is I talked to him this week about that specific road. So.
All that goes back before me or?
Yes, it does.
Yes, yes.
Our Jay and I were on commission when that all took place.
Yeah.
We, we supposedly, we were swapping Fifteenth Street to the, to the county and we were going to maintain sixty one up to our city limits. And that, I don't know why that never happened.
There was no action taken.
Nobody, nobody signed off of it.
They presented it, but no actions taken. And he's, and what Lucas said is you guys are more than welcome to take it to them again. And he will see if action could be taken. But until then, they're not just going to offer to switch. I had a good conversation with him. So that's something that we're concerned about as a city. I talked to some police officers. That's one of their concerns also is the safety. You know, if we're going to put low income out there, you know, that's a big concern. Uh, let's see, was that land offered to any local developer before he found an out of town guy?
No one approached us about it.
So you're telling me this guy just out of the air? Okay, okay.
We, we have, we've had multiple developers contact us, looking over the last several years, looking to do some.
Have you had any local talk to you about it?
No.
No, so I don't count.
When did you talk to me about that?
Friday.
Well, after we.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying there's local guys out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
And just so it's clear to everybody here, there's no one saying that we wouldn't be happy to do, to work with you on anything out there that you have a desire to do. So just, you got to talk to us and not, and not, you know, come in like this after something, someone else's approaches on something.
No, that's true, true. But when, before you bought that land, I told you that I wanted to develop it. Right? Before you bought it at several commission meetings. So it's all, it's all out there. Okay, let's see. So I talked to Josh today and the city's planning on doing a, a master plan. And he said the, the citizens will be involved in that master plan as far as getting input. What would that look like?
We're still working through some of that, but obviously you as a property owner in that area are going to be part of that. Of course, you're on the planning commissioner. So you've got two roles there. There'll obviously be some property owners out around that area that will be involved in that. And then, and we, and we'll have to work on the scope of how we open that up. But the, it will be designed to be inclusive and get as much input as we can.
Okay, so you'll listen to the neighbors out there?
Certainly.
Good to know. Let's see. My last question is, well, there's two more. How much research was done by you five before you voted in as far as the need for low income in this town? Or, or what, what benefits it'll be to this town?
Well, I can tell you, I attended a data walk. I don't know if you've heard about those.
I've not.
All right. That was Legacy Foundation in Winfield put them together. And we ranked pretty much highest in the state as, as far as poverty. That's what we're basing this on.
Sure.
The people probably that need the housing the most won't be able to afford these apartments. That's, that's the sad thing. But, you know, we, we can get them somewhere where maybe they can go after the people that move into those can move in, they can move into their houses. That's, that's the only research I've done and that was enough for me.
Okay. Okay.
I was on for two, I was on for about, about two weeks when it happened.
Right.
To me, I just went with some common sense. You know, we had, we had metal work or metal walk just down the street.
Metal walk is not low income.
It, it's, it's affordable housing.
It's, it's moderate income.
Everything down that road is affordable housing. We can call it what we want, but it's all affordable housing.
But it's not seventy thirty, which is the classification for low income.
That I do not know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but, so I guess with the sleek addition going on for low incomes, we have that addition going right now. What is the need for another low income housing development in this town rather than doing, you know, just single family homes?
It's not low income, Brandon. It's, 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 it's affordable housing. I'm looking at.
Brandon.
And, and what the, the, I guess the vision for that property is not that entire property. There, there is a vision for there to be a lot of single family up there on the, on the south side where there already currently is single family. But again, let's, we got to get through that planning process and see what all that looks like. But the, I, my previous city, we had eighty acres. We did the same thing and we had, I, we had anywhere from two hundred thousand dollars. And actually the house across the street from me was part of the grasshopper lawnmower family and they was over a million and a half dollar home. And then two blocks over was a duplex complex that had low to modern income housing in it. And, and there was all kinds of housing in that area and it blended well and it worked well.
What was the population of your town?
It was about two thousand.
About two thousand people. It's a little bit different than twelve thousand when we're trying to grow our town also.
Well, we were, it's a lot easier to grow a twelve thousand population town than it was two thousand and we.
But, but low income isn't the way to grow the town. But I mean, we can, we can sit here and split hairs, but that was just my questions.
Thank you, sir. Who asked?
My husband and I purchased the property three years ago at fifteen forty nine West Skyline Road. And since we purchased it, we've been remodeling it. And I want to ask you guys, if you had a home where it sits now and somebody told you that they were going to put affordable housing next to you, how would you feel? Do you think it would diminish the price of your home? Plus more traffic on Skyline? I am in favor of homes in there, but more like what's there, not.
Are you on that southwest corner?
Yes, yes. And I just feel like more options need to be considered than more traffic in there. The road's so narrow, it's in horrible shape. And I just think for that area, like behind Forest Land, which, you know, eventually all that, some nicer homes would be better than the affordable. Especially if y'all had to live next to it too. You'd all be like, okay, what's this going to look like in ten years?
I live next to McDonald's and I'm all right with that.
Oh, yes. I might not mind McDonald's. No, I'm just, I'm asking you guys to consider, if, if it was your home, what would you, what would you want for it? And I do know what the Jellings have heard up out there so far is nice. I mean, it's, I, I trust, you know, something like that. But just consider what you're putting out there and the road does need some upkeep.
Thank you.
So Mickey Smith? Uh, Mickey Smith?
Hey, let him go.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Mick, Mick, Mick Ball?
So I to live on the corner of Fifteenth and Skyline. I own that property there. I don't particularly want low income housing in my backyard, because that's what it's going to be. I like to talk about the road, Skyline, which is atrocious. Most of the time I will go down to Radio Lane and out just because I don't want to drive on it. My brand new pickup having shook apart in six months is crazy. And somebody's paying the taxes to get that road fixed. I pay a lot of taxes, so I'm sure some of mine is somewhere there. Now, whether it's the city or the county, I don't care. You guys need to figure it out. As far as the metal walk, you don't, you don't consider that low income. So if, even if it's modern, but let me tell you a story that happened to us a little over a year ago. I get a call at one o'clock in the afternoon. That's my wife. It's frantic. And one of the people from Metalwalk has walked down Skyline Road, decided to walk up to my house and was in the process of beating out all my front windows while my wife's at home. Thank God for the Arkansas City Police Department showing up and restraining. By the time I got there, they had him restrained. That was after he beat out all the windows at the front of my house. So I don't need more people like that in my backyard. Last thing I want to leave with, I wasn't going to talk about it, but since you brought up the hospital, you're having some billing issues. You guys admit that. But I just received a bill from the hospital this week for $6,600 for an injection. And my wife's back. We were in and out of the hospital in less than 30 minutes. Insurance has tried to work with you guys. They negotiated it down. They paid 2,500 and I still get a bill for $4,800 for an injection done by an anesthesiologist. You guys are going to get that fixed because a fix to get a lawyer and work to go to hospital. That's ridiculous. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay, Mickey Smith?
If there's more people that would like to talk, I would prefer to go last, if that's okay.
Do we have anyone else that would wish to speak?
I don't think so.
Anyone else on my list, so I think you're it.
And would somebody like, okay, almost all of my life has been involved with helping people, mostly kids, okay? Started at a very young age. This place right here, Camp McFadden, or Kyla, that man right there, his name is Kyle Shepard. He and I worked together. There is nobody that knows more about me than that man right there. But where I came from, there was an Indian tradition that the chief would have a little celebration. And outside that door is essentially my celebration that everybody that was watching, I would like to spend the rest of my time just hubbubbing and I'm going to give a gift to everybody. I'm about to finish the last of your gifts. Okay? So if it's okay, I'm going to bring in my hats. Everybody can wear a different hat, okay? And you can take something of mine, but I'm going to give all five of you a gift, okay? I am all about helping kids play. I've worked with groups in the YMCA. A lot of you may not know what the YMCA is all about, but it's called, you're working with groups. Whether it's a board raising money, whether it's children and you're the supervisor of them, it's a group work organization. I have some photos of stuff I've done. And one of the proudest things I've ever achieved in those photos was bringing inner city kids from all over Seattle. At the age of 24, I was recruiting people all over Seattle. And after five or six years of doing this, I received a discount for being the advisor of the year. And I would bring kids to the Rotunda of the, uh, Capitol in Olympia. And one year we had these three black girls who were the most beautiful people. Singers, even better. There's 500 kids, all the adults, and these three girls in this, these pictures for 12 years or so in Seattle, I was working, I was a board member at a place called the East Madison Y and all the people. If you have never tried to raise money and find yourself the only white person in a room with 30 black people, if you wouldn't be uncomfortable, and I moved from Fargo, North Dakota, I am offering to help almost at no charge, okay? The place that really should be like things I've done in my life. When I was young, we had in Fargo, a place called Playtown, run by high school and college kids at local schools, okay? That's what I grew up doing. And the YMCA had an adult side and a youth side. The Northwest Community Center has everything, a park. You're going to find me now recreating something I did 30 years ago. And that was to roller skate about 40 miles a week. I've got a pair of roller skates that's still getting repaired. I'm going to start riding around Lovey Watson Park. I can help get kids there, but it's time for me to leave the board position. But if you're well, if you would like to participate in what's called potlatch, would you, Tiffany, could you look the word potlatch up on Google? I quite don't like that thought. So. I have things that I've been making for years. And in them, I have carried my wallet forever, okay? These are baseballs that I have collected over the years. Somebody's going to miss out, but I'm finishing the last one. So all the best of luck, Tad. We'll leave the mayor out because I'm going to give the gold ball to the best person that has helped. For two years, this woman and I have talked about trying to bring more children to the Northwest Community Center. That's the only goal I have. And if anybody remembers, uh, Mike Tyson and Don King. Years ago, I was driving down the highway to go see my nephew in New Mexico. If anybody knows the story here, Joe Dale, I am Joe Dale's favorite son of all. If anybody remembers Joe Dale, the reason I left Seattle where I still own a home is because of this man who died in 2000, his father. And now this boy, okay, has a child that has a child. And that man back there, Chase, would you stand and introduce yourself and tell them how we know each other?
So I'm Chase Burgess, first of all.
Baseball coach at Cali.
Yep. I can tell. Coach of baseball at Cali College. This is my first year here. Mickey approached me one afternoon after practice about going hunting and fishing and that kind of stuff. I'm, I'm a big hunter, fisher, die, outdoors person, and Mickey was as well. And so that's kind of how we, you know.
I'll tell you right now. This is the man I used to be. And some of you knew that I had a really cool handlebar mustache. I was a really good baseball pitcher. I became a man who, with a lot of drive, I started a sports marketing business. And one of the first few clients I had was Travis Haffner. This is the man that I want to be. This gentleman right here and I helped recreate Camp McFadden's summer program, winter program, everything. We used to go down the highway and look at for hunters in the winter to increase our camping money in the winter. I am a businessman. I like selling. I like promoting.
Thank you. Did we get you to either reschedule? We're at 6:20, 25 right now. We, we went to five.
I tell you what, here's the offer.
I know, I know a little longer you wanted it to.
We'll do a potlatch at that facility when everything gets put together. These are, my wife and I got married on a baseball field during the NBC tournament and we printed these cards for everything. So yeah, if you want to reschedule me, but that's pretty much, I'm just here to say thank you. I apologize to anybody. I'm very much upset, but I have a lot of emotionalism for children. And that facility is perfect. Thank you.
Sir, you got your pictures?
So I'll leave right there till we're over. And I'll finish the last one for.
Okay, uh, anybody else? City manager updates?
Um, so I was approached by the health department, Tom Langer. They're on the building on Radio Lane that the, the city owns, that they, um, that they operate out of. There's some roof repairs, uh, about $34,000 in repairs need to be done on that roof replacement. It's not, um, I, I visit with insurance. It's not something that they're going to cover. It's just, just old and just time to repair it. Um, now in our agreement with the health department, they are responsible for maintenance on the building. But in talking to Tom, they don't have the full amount. So I'll work with him a little bit more and probably bring some of my ideas back as in the near future about how we can partner with them on that. But we don't want the roof, you know, starting to get water in it, it's going to cause a lot of other issues and that building doesn't need any more issues, so. We, uh, Mayor Warren and I attended the League of, uh, League of Kansas municipalities day at the Capitol on the, was it the 30th or the 24th? And one of those days here. It was a pretty good day. Uh, they, they did a lot of visitation with us about some of the city issues that may be coming up. A lot of it was the, the local out of the lorry and tax reduction, uh, fund that does, is still on the books and hasn't been funded for, since the early 2000s. Um, it's a, it's a, quite a bit of money that should be transferred from the state to the local governments to help offset, uh, out of law and tax or property tax that hasn't been funded for a long time. So there is a, there is a bill, it's HB 2366 that would, that would fund that again. It, uh, it's a little different critter, um, that, uh, instead of the money coming directly to the cities, because one of the arguments against refunding is that cities use it as a slush fund. So one of the, it's one of the things they proposed of doing that bill would be to, um, send that money to the property owners versus instead of straight to the city, so.
And it's about, about two mils is what they're estimating, like what, what we might get.
Yeah. So we'll, uh, we'll, we'll put it letters for, they got, we got to get it out of, uh, out of a committee into the, into the fore. But, uh, we'll, we'll write some letters of support on that. Um, try to get that moving. The, uh, so this Friday at 11 o'clock, um, we'll do a kind of a strategic work plan, uh, with, with the commissioners. We'll, we'll look back at the, the work plan that we had, uh, last two years and kind of update you guys where we're at on those items. And then, uh, we'll present some of the, you know, some of the things that we've been looking at with water system upgrades and the streets and then some of those things and, uh, try to get an idea of where your guys' priority, priorities will be for the next two years. So that we, we know that we're kind of focusing on the right items. And, um, on February 13th, um, we'll finish our commission tours of the departments. We have left the fire department to do, so we'll start in, uh, my office at 8:30 and, and, uh, kind of go over some of the, some of the challenges and things that are going on with fire department. And then we'll end up over there and you guys can tour that and see what the equipment looks like and what's going on there. On February 23rd, um, we're up, up for an award on the water treatment plant from the, uh, Associated General Contractors of Kansas. And so, uh, Mayor Warren and I will go over and, uh, have, uh, go to that ceremony. And it sounds like we'll be bringing an award home for that wastewater treatment project. Then a reminder that the, uh, SCK Health Annual Gala is on March 2nd. As you're taking it, they're going. The League of Municipalities has their Leadership Academy in Manhattan on April 12th and 13th. So if you're interested, let me know pretty quickly. So, um, and get you, get rooms, uh, it'll be Friday and Saturday for that.
It's April what?
12th and 13th.
12th and 13th.
So, uh, along with the written testimony I talked to you about on the, uh, HB 20 through 66, we provided opposition, uh, to Senate Bill 8. That's a property tax exemption for business properties in competition with government entities. There's a lot of issues there. There's no clear, how do you, how do you measure that type thing? So we, uh, wrote opposition to that. The other one we wrote opposition to was House Bill 2511. That would create partisan elections within cities, uh, where it would be, uh, city elections would be Republican, Democrat versus the independents that we have now. The big issue with that is, is the Hatch Act. It's a federal law that, just like a Mr., uh, tweeted here, a retired postal officer, we couldn't, if a postal worker wanted to, uh, run for a city commission seat, they wouldn't be eligible. If we had partisan's election, same with any acupuncturist military that, uh, it may be. So the, the, that's one of the biggest issues, other than the fact that we just don't need partisan politics brought into local, local government. And then, um, that's really, and I did pass out an ordinance to you guys here last, uh, week on, uh, abandoned properties. Something to kind of consider and look over and we can pick that up at our next work session and see, see what you think about that and we'll report on that. So that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for the good of cause?
Move for adjourned.
All right. Second. Diane, did you have something for? Yeah, okay. You're surprised. I thought, oh.
Okay, they moved second. All favors say aye.
Aye.